Past the which you know, past seven, this is the uh regular regular board meeting for the Glencoe Village Board on August twenty, uh twenty twenty five. I will call the board now and accept a roll call please.
Steve Ballers.
Here.
Trust me, Alex.
Trust me, London.
Here.
Trust me, Rosenblatt.
Here.
Trust me, Brumman.
Here.
Trust me, Scott.
Here.
Trust me, Ron.
Here. Uh we are not live streaming this meeting tonight, but the video recordings will be available on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. Um minutes have been circulated to the board, um getting published online. And I'll request unless there are comments of most to approve the minutes for the board trustees meeting committee in the hall. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty five. The board trustees meeting, regular meeting on July seventeenth, twenty twenty five. And the closed session uh on two eighteen, you know, twenty five. Unless there are comments, there are no need to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is uh public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board on non agenda items. If you would like to speak on a matter that is not the agenda, we'll ask for you to wait until that agenda items are all, then we'll give you an opportunity to speak then. If your manner is not with consent agenda, please let us know, we'll take it off consent agenda so we can talk about it. Anyone who wants to speak should fill out a speaker form located just outside uh work group, the room here. And submit it to the village manager. Uh the public comment time is intended is an opportunity if you have any comments to the village board. Will this very meeting that will say that it will not ordinarily be a time for discussion or engagement by the board? If appropriate, you may direct the village manager or our village staff to respond to questions. If you're ready to thing they'll add to it. All speakers will be limited to three minutes, care of all, we will certainly enforce this rule. For our status policy, we will limit all public comments to a total of three minutes. We'll ask that all speakers, you respect the civil and non-protected. We ask that all members of the audience refrain from applauding or making any other comments during anyone's, during the time someone's speaking. Finally, please be sure to speak directly into the microphone to ensure that all are being concreted. With those round rules regarding any public comments on non agenda items. There are, um okay. Uh the next item on the agenda is a report of committees. The first report is committee of the whole, are we going to do that? We just had a committee of the whole meeting started in five, we'll say afternoon. We talked about two things, one, re- recommendations by the preservation commission regarding possible new cens. And changes for preservation of store and architecture and buildings. The second thing we talked about was the possibility of residential fiber network installation in the village. Uh we talked about all that a few minutes ago. That concludes the report of committee of the hall, the next report is the finance committee, and I'll ask trust to Brumman, who is here at the finance committee, to report out there.
We'll be assured of report because we did that in a meeting. Uh but we are having the next meeting tomorrow morning at eight thirty in Glencoe.
The next report is uh planet commission. And I'll ask our development services director, Taylor Baxter, to report on the planet commission.
Thank you, President. Regarding the planet commission, we did not have a meeting in July, it will be meeting next week. Uh to discuss uh the on-year downtown marketing street survey study. Uh this will also be a joint meeting with the zoning commission, first that meeting. Will be to provide some additional feedback on presentation of uh event of the political leaders plans. For their renovation expansion projects, it's not uh a meeting, we're making any decisions on that project, it's just an initial. Um a discussion between those who have this kind of time, right? Yeah, against the approach right now.
I don't see any questions, thanks for that, if you report, so maybe the next report is the golf, five hundred committee, President Paul X is our representative of that.
Thank you, President. Glencoe is a successful one for golf with ground and revenue exceeding budget. Construction uh of the facility is on her way. See if some of the socials there are being sent into the aerial views. Uh spoils for the construction project have moved to the eighteen hole. This is to to save our removal cost and add the same over the project. The berm has been created with spoils, which will be finished with the best view of the native flower and seed mix. Uh other news is the Illinois Junior Golf Association, another stroke play event with ninety junior golfers participating. The play for pink events held in recent eight thousand dollars for cancer research, it was a new golf course record. And then a golf clinic out in uh tell for Mary, Mary, Mary goes veterans golf program. And twenty veterans are part of the program.
Thanks for that. Important, the next report is sustainable open task force, Trustee Rosenblatt is our representative in Glencoe.
Thank you, President Ron. The uh sustainable body task force met in July twenty second. Uh we go to plan the partner, the partnership of the company called Paper Tighter, uh does paper shredding. Should be used by small business and maybe drop off their. Paint that needs to be shredded at the technical center. And if paint will tell you, we'll take that paper shredded and um recycle. Costs for to do that is eight hundred dollars per year, which paid by the uh task force. We'll throw it on another, you not much shred of paper into recycle bins, it's gems of the paper. Processing, uh for that has to be uh disposed separately. Uh they also discussed the financial plans for the Green Bay Trail Day, which already took place. And they're planning on releasing some social media messaging. The next task force meeting is gonna be August twenty sixth, uh they also consulted with uh pale blue dot, which is their sustainability action plan. Insulted, they've been working to put together a uh planning team to oversee the development of their plan. And running community survey to understand residents' concern around sustainability. Uh the village will be accepting obligations for the planning team online and they could be shared with the village as E News this week. As your social media, somebody that signed up uh through September nineteenth, so you got about a month to sign up. The next meeting will be held at August twenty sixth at uh the Go Tom, thank you.
Thanks for that report, uh our next report is the council for inclusion in the community, and I'll ask trust you, Scott, who's our representative on the council, to report.
Thank you, uh Glencoe Council for Inclusion in Community met on August fourth to discuss recent events and upcoming opportunities for the council. The council discussed the recent sponsorship of the El Freco Infinity Night Band, Funkin Easy, supported writers theater. Members of the council were present at the event, the booth and shared the event as well attended. The council is sponsoring the school supply donation drive through Family Promise, which is ongoing through the month of August. Family Promise is a national nonprofit supporting families experiencing homelessness. Donations will help ensure children are prepared as they head back to school. And residents can donate to the drive by checking out um recent posts or recent posts on social media. Uh finally, the council discussed becoming a sponsor for the District Thirty Five Community Event, which will benefit family services. The American Heart Association and the Lymphoma Research Foundation. Uh GCIC members will also support the event by volunteering their time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the GCIC is Monday, September eighth.
Thanks for that report, the next two reports are the preservation commission, tree commission. Trustee, our representative of all adults.
Thank you. At its August fifth meeting, the preservation commission finalized materials in preparation for the village board's consideration of potential economic and other incentives to support historic preservation. The commission's final analysis recommendations were presented earlier this evening. Uh some items will be forwarded to the zoning board for consideration. The commission also conducted a public hearing regarding the voluntary addition of two-two-two Maple Hill Row to the certified landmark list. As part of deliberations, commissioners reviewed the property's eligibility and considered public input. Before recommending that the property be considered by the village board as a certified landmark. This item will replace it uh in before the board at a future meeting. Uh in addition, the commission reviewed a demolition permit application for the property at three seventy-nine Jefferson Avenue, a historically significant property. Uh after evaluation, the commission determined that no further action should be taken. The next regularly scheduled meeting is September second. And that is the preservation mission, the tree commission. They uh tree commission held their rescheduled regular meeting at noon on August twentieth this morning. The village staff provided an update to the following items. Ninety-six tree trees were planted two times the normal amount of uh of trees planted with the help of outside government grants. The village buckthorn removal is completed along the railroad tracks near downtown. And the village will soon engage with Cook County Forest Reserve to schedule the removal of buckthorn along the northeast corner of the Glencoe Golf Course. The tree line along Wesley Road is being planned to remove buckthorn and other brush. Planning for the joint tree nursery to be developed with the park district is also underway. With planting planned for next spring. Developers of the Forest Edge subdivision are expected to start planting uh perimeter and entrance trees this fall and complete the right-of-way plantings next year. After the basic infrastructure is complete. Work continued on the tree ordinance to clarify definitions. Establish a process to manage exceptions and set fees. Other more short communities are still in some resource as well. This work is being coordinated with volunteers from the Sustainability Task Force Commission. Uh the village attorney's office and village staff. Community outreach will continue with the tree recognition recognition program. And uh which will include co- uh co-programming with others. And ongoing village communication. The next regular meeting is set for October thirteenth, but will likely be moved for um based on vacations. Thank you very much.
That concludes for those reports, that concludes the reports of the committees. Only fifteen minutes, we have some guests here, and I don't want to congratulate us particularly, but we got a little soon. So we can get to our public safety meeting. The next thing we have on the agenda is reports of the officers, first the village manager's reports. And village manager Brown.
Thank you, President Ron. Good evening, everyone. Uh yes, our first item on the live report uh is the opportunity to uh introduce a new public safety officer to our community. I'm very excited that in a few short moments, I'll be administering the office. Uh but I have asked trustee, excuse me, the director of public safety, Sean Lauter. Uh do a little brief introduction first, and we will go from there, so Chief, I'll hand over to you.
Sure, thank you very much. Uh President Ron, the trustees and village manager Crowley, thank you for the opportunity. Once more, I want to introduce another wonderful addition to the Glencoe Public Safety Team, Robert Jaffres Jr. Robert is joined here by his father, Robert Senior, mother Maria, and fiancee, Hidjala. The Jaffres family hails originally from Displanes, Illinois. Their parents, Robert Senior and Maria, raised Robert Junior and his older brother Albert. Years ago, after the drive wasn't so bad, Robert Senior started Zante's Restaurant on one sixty, I think it's ninety six, and then handed to the owner. This is a great fast food restaurant served as the center of the Jaffres family, where even Robert, who he remembers for some time. I personally recommend that I'll shoot, and that is the welcome heroes. In our life, it won't be that, it won't be bad, get home to these planes, uh go to these planes, but one accident can turn that our life into a three hour crossway here. So that can be rough, but you know, Maria worked as a dietary mentor, retired, and also worked as a chef. I am very pleased to announce that here, at this moment, uh this week, Robert Senior and Maria have officially retired. And sold the business on the eighteenth, congratulations to you. Robert's older brother, Albert, has established himself as a successful, with a successful career in media and acting. And Jelena and Robert, that years ago, as youngsters, and they have a good heart. She works as a nurse administrator in the ass. They have decided for their ceremony, the wedding, they picked June sixth, only to assist now, if you're not familiar. June sixth is the anniversary of the beginning, maybe Europe, so yeah. Uh when, after graduating from all of my school, Robert attended Northern Illinois University, carrying a natural sciences psychopath. Uh he has a long interest in raising contest boards, including boxing, Muay Thai boxing, introducing. This brings him patience, confidence, and self-discipline. That love of boxing, his planes, connected him with a coach and then the Chicago Police Service. Who was hired into five of their days. One ride along the eighteen district in Chicago, and he was so. At twenty-three years of age, he was hired for the Chambur Police Department. He became extremely proficient in firearms and firearms destruction, creating his passion as the youngest uh firearms, one of the youngest firearms to start with. Through shooting sports, he was thrown into one of our tactics, Stacy, who referred him to the all of that relying process, and as you know, he came as steal what we can, the best of our bases, and I can say, we are absolutely, absolutely lucky to have stolen from Chambur. In his short time, Michael, Robert has connected quickly with officers, showing he knows the profession. And arguably, he even saved the life of a wonderful resident just last week. So I ask you, uh they go over her, the best one events. Uh best my events is defined as an extreme unregionalized, that results in either tremendously beneficial or harmful persons. Now, if it's beneficial, we hardly have to pay for that, we hardly have to get much stock at all. If it's harmful, it is simply a catalyst. Uh all of the best one event, uh best one event here is showing you the subtle reasons, firstly, it's just amusing. It's part of the culture, the side of me, I find it true. You never see someone, you'll never see someone do something quite like this in your normal day. But outside of Glencoe, you'll probably never run into a person that is a police officer, a firefighter, and a overnight, all at the same time. You'll probably never meet a group that can common solve in three separate directions at the same time. And when those officers do something, our department apply those signals in concert on behalf of the village. I have that most of your residents that are real ones, that are most benefit. Uh you need officers apply that man. In truth, that is why I thought it was very difficult to sell something. So you make us what happened here. Is we had a turkey tonight, it's well, again, I recommend you number two. Place to the, I give you our new public safety officer, Robert Jaffres Jr., page number six seven. Robert? So if you can, we put four and we try, we'll just be able to office and we find what's in case of pressures that we can beat this. It's all set for us, come on, if they're down like this. Fail not just to believe us. So, please raise your right hand, yeah. State to, I do solemnly swear, do solemn to the that I support the constitution of the United States, I support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Illinois. Say one more, be ordinance, is it, told you? That I have faithfully discharged, that I have legally discharged the duties of the position. Duties of decision, the public safety officer, the public safety officer, according to the best of all, according to the best of all.
Oh yeah, yeah, as always say, we have a work, well, we are thrilled to have you here, we are so proud of our public safety department. We have the best officers anywhere, and we're glad you're joining us. About the swan, you came to the right place, um I don't know if you know about this. Uh but you should, someone should tell me about Glenda. Because we actually had a duck that uh um landed in front of uh village hall. Laid her eggs and was filmed uh for a month till she had twelve duck eggs that marched down uh from her purse in front of the hall. So your swan fits right. Uh let me also say, congratulations on your impending actuals on June sixth. Chief Lauter is a World War Two expert, which is why you knew about E-Day, and you should ask her about those cheap. Uh you can ask for a ride in these cheap, which he dropped, which he uh drives during our Christmas July parade. And I also want to congratulate you on June sixth, E-Day, that's okay. Uh the summer seventh would have been a problem, because that's the day which the living is welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Well, I took, I took the words right out of my mouth, I don't want to add too much to that, other than to say, uh it is always my greatest privilege to be able to administer that. I'm so proud, I'm so glad to have you join our ranks. Uh they're all standing back there, um this is a safe building in town right now, but um our public safety force is uh starting to come up, and it is a privilege to see you join them, and uh we know that you're gonna have a long and and productive career here in Glencoe. This community loves our public safety department, so I think you'll start feeling that if you haven't already here soon. Um just so you know, uh it's the best place to work, so we're so glad to have you here. Thank you for, thank you for, thank you for your family for being here. As another person who grew up in Displanes, and I'm always grateful to see folks um uh who have a similar path to mine, but um it's a great, uh it's just a great place, and Glencoe will always move forward, so thank you for thank you for sharing and with us, we are very grateful for that as well. Alright, you guys can stick around if you want to, because I know this is your favorite energy, or you can, or you can, you got, chief, you can't leave. I just saw the, he was, he was like, oh, no, too bad.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Congratulations.
Just a few quick additional items on our report this evening, and then we will move along with the agenda. And I wanted to just uh run through a quick update on where we're going to stand with some of our community investment program, uh projects. Um I've uh given my, I've had options, I've had to do these for the last several months. The, the good news on our Dundee Road R band project is that it is in the five stretches. Uh as I drove here tonight, I was excited to see that the new sidewalk is well underway. Um that is connecting uh Burn and Apple to Greenwood on the south side of Dundee Road. And then there will be expression connecting Burn and Apple to Green Bay, on the north side of the road. Long time projects that we are so excited to see, um those will be ready for start of school next week, so that's very exciting. Um and we are also in those last steps for all the pedestrian crossing improvements that are under way to town. We're gonna need it all, it's several rapid rectangular flashing beacons uh next week, and um while they won't necessarily be ready for the start of school, they will be ready. Um getting them up September, so we're really excited to see all of those getting underway. And then, uh the board did approve last month uh the resursancing uh of the Silver Road Bridge. Uh that is likely to begin in the first week of September, and we expect it will be wrapped up by the end of next day. So uh that probably will close that bridge during that timeframe, um but we are pretty game with all those residents um ready for early, so again, exciting things, it's been here again in our construction season this year. Uh it is, as I mentioned, back to school next week, Glencoe, um District Thirty Five students will return to school Tuesday, August twenty-sixth. Public safety is always, has been working closely with our community partners at District Thirty Five. We prepare that return to school, just a reminder uh to the community, and this is something we've heard be said before, um please drive with care and caution uh throughout our community, watch those speeds. Um take them down a couple of notches as you are proceeding through Glencoe. With school back in session, school bus are gonna be on our roadways. And more children and their families are gonna be utilizing the streets and sidewalks, inviting lots of school. Let's keep an eye out for uh those kiddos um in all of our school zones. But again, let's keep a, let's keep an eye on our speed as well as we're driving through our residential neighborhoods, through our business districts. Um and really everywhere through the community. Last but not least, later day is Monday, September first, village hall is closed that day. And on all Monday and Tuesday, garbage and recycling collections that week are delayed by Monday, so uh those papers will be on Tuesday and Wednesday, no change to planned state waste collection that week. And that's all I have for you this evening.
We are moving right along, which is good. Um the next item on the agenda is the village president's report. Uh we have a couple of proclamations which have been published online, circulated to the board. The first one is consideration of proclamation declaring September twenty twenty-five as ovarian cancer awareness month in the village Glencoe. Um ovarian cancer is horrible. Um but one of the ways to beat ovarian cancer is to catch it early, so uh the idea here is people should know uh about this and the symptoms that may be seen minor but aren't. Um so I have a proclamation on that. Uh unless there are any comments, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries, the second proclamation is consideration of proclamation declaring September fifteenth, October fifteenth twenty twenty-five as Hispanic characters month in the village Glencoe. Again, proclamation has been circulated to the community and to the board. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proclamation is approved, uh there's one more item. So, I was reading a really excellent nonfiction book called Murder in the Dollhouse, with Jennifer DuBose's story. It's about a murder that you've probably heard about, uh um of a woman, uh and from New Canaan, Connecticut, of town goes a lot like a Glencoe. Why am I saying this? The reason I'm saying this, because the author of this really excellent book is a very well-regarded nonfiction writer. Who has a long string of books, also writes for Vanity Fair, and he writes uh for Rolling Stone. Uh the author is a man named Rich Cohen. And Rich Cohen, um he was born in this horse, but he was raised in Glencoe, Illinois. So he is a son of Glencoe, and he is one of our best nonfiction writers in the country. Um all his books are, I, I haven't read, uh all, they all made great news, I read this one. Even though I knew all about what was gonna happen, and it was mesmerizing, so I could uh but I'm always thrilled to see uh someone from Glencoe who's made good, Rich Cohen is one of those folks.
You wrote a fiction book about, uh it's a, it's a novel about Glencoe, called Laker Guide. I think it's what it's called, it's really good.
Okay, that concludes uh village president's report. Okay, that concludes, uh, the village president's report. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are published online in the community. They've been reviewed by the board members individually or together as part of our community at the whole. We don't think they warrant any further public discussion, unless someone must pull something out of consent agenda. I don't see anyone doing, um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So. Second.
We need a roll call for this.
Trusty Wallace, yes, trustee Lander.
Yes.
Trusty Rosenblatt.
Yes.
Trusty Rubin.
Yes.
Trusty Scott.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Uh, the next item on the agenda is our regular business, and for regular business, you have consideration for any some vending of Glendale Village code. Starting electric scooters, electric bicycles, and other motor-driven vehicles. And I will ask our public safety, safety director to go on offer two percent.
Good evening, Mr. Ed.
Welcome back.
Hello, good afternoon. So, um, we have, uh, we have one group for you, and it's attached to part of your, uh, board packets. Uh, memorandum of stating, outlining, as well as a attached proposed ordinance. Um, the ordinance itself, as we were explaining, we're an ideal view of the ordinance itself, uh, as our, our little attorneys, um. Built to not exist in small, or the simple surrounding, uh, surrounding spaces, that also takes onto you to close some confusing loopholes. Again, we wanna make sure ultimately we have a strong, uh, base that allows us to face problems that we're missing, address some city complaints, and ensure a better and more universal safety. Starting with the first, first three key definitions, uh, defining the logic scooter, as you know, when we talk about it, it's, um, a very, like. There are low-ski scooters, there are high-ski scooters. Uh, quite frankly, it seems as though some of the, um, state laws, uh, have not been able to keep up with a number of the innovation of these things. Um, the, as defined, which, uh, part of many of the last surprise in the first year, a low-ski scooter forces, uh, you know, ten miles per hour. Um, and it, it said age, put it as a, it made it free for all. Then there's, though, however, many scooters without really being able to seize the scooter, test it, you can't tell for those above here at an hour. Um, I, I also had, I think, that, uh, there was a recent incident that responded to, uh, a, a accident that was a electric, um, called electric scooter, if you would. Um, uh, but after the minor who was involved in a traffic accident with it, um, review of the speed hour, uh, that catalogs, he served, they showed that minor who's traveling in excess of sixty miles per hour. So these things are, I mean, let's be fair, um, they're exciting, they're fun, but they're dangerous as well, yes. So, um, the electric scooter itself, this definition of scooter is perfectly, it's, it's electric scooter, it just means it's a small, uh, uh. Uh, but also, um, both low-ski scooters is defined by the order of the code, uh, as well as, you know, electric scooters in excessive pounds, you know. Low-ski electric bicycles, remind you also too, when these were first introduced in the state of all is introduced in twenty eighteen, there are three categories, and when you're just one, you remain in that category. Now, I appreciate you can get out, appreciate the buttons on there, so you can have something that may have pedals, but you don't need to pedal. It's something that just, it, it, again, it, it really makes it quite hard to start enforcement and, and also is potentially, uh, creates safety to children. Lastly, um, the most important thing to remember is the motor-driven vehicle. This essentially categorizes everything that we're looking to, uh, to focus on as a motor-driven vehicle. It, it doesn't have a pedal, doesn't have required assistance pedal, um, but yet has some sort of a motor, be a moped, gas, uh, chain-driven, um, you know, an automatic skateboard. All these things are considered a motor-driven vehicle. However, for possession, for vehicles, a little ice, Cadillac, that, you know, we got to be riding, that, that, those are not considered motor. So, bring us to the next. Some key provisions, um, that were discussed, in particular. So this is, right now, I should just go and combine all border proof. So the motor-driven vehicle definition, again, like, uh, so the very public way of making sure we cover it, and kind of highlighted, um, as our terms are very careful to the full social purpose. Um, these scooters are very regulated in the same manner, um, whether they're picked ahead and highlighted, the low-ski scooter, the board, the scooter goes to assessment at all. And for possession, what we wanna focus on is the age. Anyone over the age of sixteen is prohibited from operating any motor-driven. Um, you must have a driver's license, so if you're sixteen and have a driver's license, um. You are capable of operating this. You must adhere to the auto vehicle code, so our principal movement and a number of different safety concerns are reminders. Operating these, again, are pretty fun, accessible, where they're riding through the business district, they're riding through sidewalks, you can hear them coming, and it creates a number of post-losses, it's a number of. Um, and you cannot, without a supervision, uh, you're competent, other adults, you're against those streets. Um, riders must be over the age of eighteen and hold out a drop list, operate these scooters on those streets. Uh, this is parallel to the auto vehicle code. Um, as we had it before, this poses an important, this, this means an unfair situation, uh, but of course, unfair, so this creates a very typical situation for us to maintain safety. Enforce the rules and yet not, um, count down on Congress, um, a minor who's operating on these things. It creates a situation for at least one person in any capacity, uh, with the current, um, state law. Um, very little opportunity to be much. Without being excessively punitive on the part of. Uh, that's all. So as we noted, we're gonna keep on going, that's the important thing, that's we keep off the sidewalks and try to keep you safe. Um, if we're, uh, presumptive, uh, if they are above the age of sixteen and have a driver's license, they've attended their basis, they understand they lose the road. They performed as my, my old sixteen-year-old was going to cross, right, and held it for fifty hours driving, uh, who taken a course, they've done the serve driving with instructor, they know the rules. So as, if, if they were under the age of, it'd be very hard for us, if, if not home, it's in a hospital, which would get some sort of manner of cranny. And then again, just the, the understanding and the brain function, uh, to operate these things safely. We've seen in a number of different, um, neighborhoods, there are some horrific injuries of my, my age of sixteen operating these vehicles. Uh, but again, uh, there is possibility, I think, very strong, had a driver's license and all that associated training. But those things could be harmful, so, um, our, powers are gonna be required for all motor-driven vehicles, regardless of the age of the adult. Again, we're focusing on safety. And we talked about how wheel chairs and toys are not included in this, and here's a important distinction, and this is, as we highlighted previously, um, in order to ensure compliance. Uh, if a minor is operating violation, we can cite the adults, we can cite the parent, provided they're given consent, no one giving them consent, now, but these violations. Uh, as we discussed, we learned through, uh, this is a key best practice that enables the North utilizing, um, as that urban. The most important is one hundred percent compliance, zero citation issue, that I think is, uh, into the table. Um, consideration as far as, or consideration varies, uh, again, discussed conversations with, with the schools, uh, and then going back to school. And this could be our principal opportunity and focus, is to ensure education is pursued, uh, and education is always the key. Uh, we had, we had good games, but without assortments, I think, I think this is the next stop. Too many questions.
I don't wanna get too into the weeds, but you, you separated out like the little types, the sort of kid vehicles that have motors. Um, but to me, and I'm sure this speaks to the point, there's a sort of gray area around, like, how is that defined? Um, there are sort of go-kart-looking things on the street that I think some families might categorize as more toy-like. But in my experience, and in effect, very much operate like these, to me, would fall under the motor vehicle, um, category. But is there any, the cart and fast rule in terms of size of the?
Yeah, those are, this is a question. So you were working on a, a definition that you use, uh, of the auto vehicle code and then other places, which is that toy vehicle. That toy vehicle is any battery-powered ride-on toy that is designed not to seat ten miles an hour. That moves any number of wheels in or seeing a stereo seater platform, and is designed for children under the age of eight years. Um, so this would not include, literally today when I was arriving here, I saw a kid in an electric go-kart crossing Peterson in the city. Um, and that thing was very.
It's going to test.
Um, and it is obviously meant to go faster than ten miles an hour. Um, I mean, you know, I think. What, uh, the things you were concerned with would fall outside of, um, toy vehicle, and would be considered a motor-driven vehicle, and would be motor-driven. Um, so that, that, kind of that, that categorization, that definition of motor-driven vehicles trying to capture not only, uh, the electric scooters, not only the, um, EVs. But also like your one-wheel platform things, if you see people on, um, it's really about the speed that they're, you know. We also realize that technology and what can be pumped out of batteries in China can outstrip our ability to write definitions. Uh, so we're just gonna try and keep as versus.
Question.
Question. What are the penalties for not following the code? Uh, so it provides for not to use the citation referred of course, specifically the parent. Um, I, I personally feel that, uh, that is the most effective means, uh, that if you like, I think, it's called the work law. Um, we would ideally like to, on contact with anybody using any minor, proceed by, sorry, um, any minor, uh, would be violation of service, and it is part of the essential power. Um, you know, a brief discussion, may contact it with all possible group of parents, um, but upon a review, or if they're unseen. And you will discuss with them, make sure that they're informed, also in what we first, because again, this is gonna be you. Um, and pay sure they're informed, and ensure the penalties, and then, uh, then we'll send them on their way to have their own. Um, the, uh, the idea behind it, they'll, if, again, we had these issues, is the option to issue citation for them, for the little prosecutor connection. So all the way, uh, as we, this is a great pathway for us to navigate this into education court, or for administrative hearing court must be, which is another thing that we're underway, it's first developing. Um, but as of right now, we can offer to you that you can issue other citations that we handle right, uh, the little prosecutor. So, but again, my, my principal focus is, is ever, is education, um, and combined with other stations, that's the goal.
Any other questions? Okay, um. The village board, I think we've talked about this before. Um. Village manager Crowley, I, uh, went to a meeting of, um, bakers, village managers, Senator Morrison. Um, and there's sort of all municipalities noted, the state started to legislate about this, but didn't, you could finish. And there's, there's, uh, we encourage, our state senator encouraged our cohorts to have state regulation, because uniform regulations make a lot more sense than a, they, um. Inconsistent, patchwork quilt of regulations. Having said that, um, the regulation presented tonight is, uh, our best guess, our best effort to take from what our neighbors. Um, working with all around freedom that have come up with, um, with a heavy emphasis, as, um, Chief Lockery said, of trying to educate, so people just don't violate the rules. Uh, but we have ballerina rules in case, in case it doesn't work. Um. None of us thinks that what we come up with is the perfect thing, we don't know yet what the perfect thing is. Um, and we hope that it'll, it'll help make our residents, and our young residents, and our business districts safer. So, if this is our best ever, now, if, if it turns out that somebody else thought of a better idea, um, certainly look at it. And of course, we're hoping state can make this uniform, but state does always do the right thing, so we're stepping in now. With that, is there a motion to approve the ordinance that's presented?
Motion to approve the ordinance, uh, presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Trusty Wallace, yes, trustee Lander, trusty Rosenblatt.
Yes.
Trusty Rubin.
Yes.
Trusty Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries, your ordinance approved, uh, it's all in its works.
Thank you very much, um.
The next item on the agenda is all the business, does anyone have any other? Trusty Scott.
Thank you, President Rowan. Um, I just thought I would, uh, use this opportunity to share, um, well, I'll start by saying that I think, uh, often in life, complaints are more common. I'm sure our village management would agree that more often than, uh, we, when we hear from residents, unfortunately, I know I am guilty of this. Um, when I'm unhappy, I can normally remember to register my dissatisfaction, but when I'm pleased with something, oftentimes, uh, sending that positive feedback kind of slips off the radar. Um, but over the past few months, I received two pieces of especially thoughtful, positive feedback about our village services, and so, um. You guys will indulge me, I'll be very fast, I'd like to read that into the record. Um, the first came from, you know, governmental partner Lisa Shaver, the executive director of Park District. Um, and I was not at the July meeting, so it's a bit tardy, but Lisa made a point of taking me aside on the Fourth of July to thank the village, especially in public works. For their thoughtful partnership around multiple events that comprise the village's celebration of the holiday. Um, I think it's easy to forget that the village and the park district are two distinct organizations, maybe not for us, but for the public. Um, and, and it's not actually a bad thing, but in fact, um, membership, as we know, happens by accident, or because we just happen to operate in the same town. Um, and I need to go as far as to say that at times in the past, it's probably been a stretch to call our operations, our partnership with the park district partnership. So, uh, to hear from Lisa that she is, was really over the top pleased with the level of service that park district received from the village, um, is really meaningful. So, uh, kudos to public works, and thank you for making this a little good, and your team. Uh, the second came from a resident who I also meet as a community partner, Wendy Serena, Wendy Serena, who was the founder of the North Shore Exchange. Uh, Wendy said, I wanted to be sure to mention that public safety and the village staff has been amazing to North Shore Exchange, and has helped us in so many ways. I want you to know how much I appreciate them. So, big thank you to public safety and, um, village staff, who again, probably doesn't hear enough from all of us, and certainly not from the public. Much, we appreciate the great work that you do, and that's it for me.
Well, absolutely, thank you. Um. So. We're the village board, the trustees, our president. Um, certain that almost nobody in the village knows who we are, uh, the, uh, the president. The only time they wanna find out was from the deputy. So, uh, it is excellent here, though it has some positives to say, although we know, we've done surveys. Uh, village is by and large is doing a good job, people are happy with the services that our village staff provides, that our public safety officers provide. Um, and if they thought about it, they're mostly playing, we're okay, but they don't know who we are, so they got a problem, and then we're, okay. Any other business? Um, we had initially thought that there might be a closed session, but we've thought about it, and there isn't gonna be a closed session. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All, they can say aye.
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 Motion carries for adjourned. See everybody.